Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special board meeting as we will today be selecting a new superintendent for the Oxford School District. John, thank you for being here again to lead us in this closing part of the process. Before we get going, let's rise and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, this meeting is a single motioned meeting. If there's anyone here that desires to speak at unscheduled audience participation, there are some white cards, like four-by-six cards by the agenda. Fill those out, please, and give those to Angela. And then, when we get to that point in the meeting, she will give those to me, and then we'll do that section. Mary, would you take attendance?
I shall. President Donnelly?
Here.
Vice President Griffith?
Here.
Secretary Hanser, present.
Treasurer Bailey?
Here.
Trustee DeAlessandro?
Here.
Trustee Foster?
Here.
Trustee Schaper?
Here.
Very good. Thank you, board members. I don't have any changes to the board agenda, so one and two are done. And John, you're here to lead us into the next step, so thank you.
Sure. So, you've completed every step of the process intended to help you reach the point where you're able to make a decision, and so here you are, ready for that. I commend you because I know it wasn't easy. You know, we had a significant delay due to the unspeakable tragedy that you experienced. And then, on top of that, I've been doing this over six years. I've never had interviews canceled because of snow days, and you had two. So, we adjusted, we made it work, and you're here tonight to make your decision. So, to be consistent with that, we've done this before, and we've talked about this, but just to repeat it, we'll have each one of you speak to which of these two final candidates you would like to select as your next superintendent, to whatever extent you'd like to. Of course, you can speak to why. I'm sure by now this goes without saying, but what we never get into is why we might not want one of the two finalists, only affirmatively why it is that you might like to select one of those two. So, each one of you would have that opportunity. I'll track it. You may not need me to, but I'll do that, just in case I have to give back to you kind of who supported whom, how many numbers for each candidate. But regardless, wherever majority support lies at that point would be as simple as somebody making a motion to select that person as your next superintendent, having that motion seconded. Of course, as with any motion, there could be further discussion, and then you'll go ahead and vote. As we talked about, it's your call, but you'll have the chance to be transparent in terms of who it is that you're supporting. When it comes to the vote, we advise that it's great if you can also vote yes in support of the motion to show solidarity as a board in support for the person who's about to be your next superintendent. It's probably your call.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Mary, as we do a roll call vote, obviously, there are two remaining candidates. Our process was to deliberate and come into this meeting with one name, and we'll work through a roll call vote. And as that is happening, John will be tallying those votes, and then he'll be letting us know which one has four or more, which would be the majority. So, Mary?
Trustee Schaper? First of all, I wanted to thank MLI and John. I thought that the process was handled extremely professionally and well-done, even with our circumstances and our snow days. And he really helped guide us, I felt, and provide a clear explanation to our constituents about the process and how it works so that everybody understands. And so, I wanted to take a moment and just tell you how much we appreciate that as a board. And I also wanted to say that I felt both candidates were extremely qualified and had a lot to bring, our community and our district. It is my hope to roll call for Ken Weaver as superintendent of Oxford Community Schools. Trustee Foster?
Ken Weaver?
Trustee DeAlessandro?
Ken Weaver.
Treasurer Bailey?
I will go with David Pass.
Secretary Hanser? My support, I support Ken Weaver. Vice President Griffith?
Ken Weaver.
President Donnelly? Donnelly?
As Heather said, I too, John, would like to thank you for the process. Grueling at times, but good. The integrity of the process was pretty impressive, and I thank you for jumping through those snow day hoops and all those things to make sure that each candidate had equity when it came to how their process went. You fought for that well, and I appreciate that. I too would have Ken Weaver. If I'm right, we are six to one?
Correct.
So, I would accept a motion. Dan?
Thank you. Move to appoint Ken Weaver as the next superintendent of Oxford Community Schools, subject to a mutually agreeable contract and authorized board president Tom Donnelly to discuss contract terms with Ken Weaver.
Thank you, Dan. Is there support? Eric's support? Any further discussion?
I think it's very much appreciated exactly what Tom and Heather said, your diligence and your firm's diligence to our search. It wasn't easy. It didn't always come without some criticism, but that criticism is okay, because it means that there's people that really care in our community, and that's okay. We have to have that. We had two really good candidates, as Tom and Heather both said, and we should be proud of the fact that we've had really good internal candidates. The seeds that we have sown in this district are now starting to be growing up, and it's going to make this district stronger. And it's not just in our superintendent candidates, it's a lot of people. This team has been through a lot, and this community has been through a lot, and I'm super proud of them.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else chatting?
Yeah, I think it's worth mentioning, or rather, a big thank you, I think, to all of our people at the school, staff, teachers, administrators, students, parents, community leaders. It was quite a process for us to go through, but we could not have gotten to where we are without a wealth of feedback from people that came to our meetings to provide us instant responses, people that attended stakeholder meetings, site visits. There was just information coming to us, and please understand that every single one of those feedback forms was read and reflected upon. I just, again, thank you to everybody that participated in that way. It was, we couldn't have done it without that information, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Very good. Roll call it?
Roll call it.
Ms. Schaper? Yes. Mr. DeAlessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser, yes. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Everyone, the task at this point is to see if I can dial Mr. Weaver in and let him know in front of all of you. I'll be putting it on speakerphone if he lets me.
My guess is he's probably working.
Call his office number. All right. There it is.
Nobody's ever accused the board members of being tech savvy.
That is true.
I have three left thumbs when it comes to texting. Put him on. He's not going to answer.
Ken Weaver, this is President Tom Donnelly, and I'm wanting to know if I can put this call on my speakerphone.
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you, sir. All right, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. Once again, this is Tom Donnelly of the Oxford School Board of Education. Our meeting is still in progress, and I've put you on a speakerphone so that the rest of the board and those who are in attendance can hear. I have the pleasure of informing you that our Board of Education has voted unanimously to select you as the new superintendent of Oxford Community Schools. Congratulations. We're very excited to have you as our new leader. The next step is for us to agree upon your employment contract. You will be getting, sent to you in your email, a draft contract that you will be reviewing and looking at and talking with me as the board president as to any type of negotiated steps that you might want to have different than what's there. Congratulations again on your selection as the new superintendent of Oxford Community Schools. We look forward to working with you in your new role very soon.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I am just overwhelmed with the trust that you're putting into me, and I am just honored to have this sacred responsibility and plan on leading us forward and leading us as we reclaim our future, and I thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Go have some fun talking to your family, and you and I will talk soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
I was laughing and crying at the same time. All right. Thank you, everyone. And John, I think that was absolutely the right thing to do. That was beautiful. That was beautiful. So, thank you very much. All right, we'll take a short break so John can work his way out. I can get some cards, if there are some, and we're moving to unscheduled audience participation here in just a second. Or do I need to go during this break with you? That's what I'm going to do, right?
Yeah.
All right, fellow board members, I just got off the phone with David Pass and wanted you to know that he thanked us profusely for the job that we did. He was proud to be a part of the process and proud to work for Oxford, so I just wanted you to know all that. Emily? Emily wants to talk about police presence at the high school, and come on up to the table, please. Since it's being recorded, it'd be good for you to be there so that your voice is picked up. If you'd just kind of sit in the chair.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello. So, I, before the incident, I never took my son to high school. My husband did that, and since the incident, I've taken my son to school almost every morning. And I've watched, over the last two weeks, three police cars, down to two, down to one. There have been days where I've driven up to the school to drop him off where I don't see any. There was one day last week where I actually called and inquired at the front office, and whoever it was that I spoke with, the main secretary, kind of stammered a little bit when I asked, "Is this it? Are we having no more police presence?" She didn't really have an answer. She said, "I can patch you through to the principal secretary if you'd like to leave a message." I said, "No, that's okay. I'll either leave an email or address," like I'm doing tonight, "the questions about is the police presence the way it has been? In the weeks after the shooting, is that done?" I think that there's, I've asked my son, he's a freshman, "Are you seeing security? Are you seeing uniformed police officers?" And I think the fact that he's not able to tell me whether or not he notices it anymore is maybe a bit of a security and a safety issue for at least my son. So, I wanted to ask if that is done. Just please communicate through some form that, either it's one, or two, or three, or none, whatever it is that we have, and how long they'll be present. I did see a post regarding the Spring Fling Dance, and I don't know this for certain, but just wanted to put this out there, that there was some requests for additional presence, security presence, law enforcement presence, whatever it is, at the Spring Fling Dance. There's been, from what I understand, very little communication about the dance, who's attending the dance as far as staff, who's going to be there to help support the kids. So, there is conjecture, and I don't have anything other than that, to say that there is information floating out there that someone from the leadership class inside the high school actually approached either the principal or the assistant principal and asked for law enforcement presence at the Spring Fling Dance, and they were told that that's not an option. So, again, conjecture, just something to look into. I don't have a way to verify. Lunch options, I know that the lunch thing has been brought to folks' attention. My 14, almost 15-year-old freshman who eats like he has a hollow leg has not eaten lunch in the high school since he came back. Do you have any lunch today, Andrew? No, just a bag of sun chips. So, I know that there was also talk about options of an alternative place for children to eat. I don't know if that was taken away, or if it's not an option anymore, but I can just tell you that my own son has not eaten a lunch of any substance since he came back. And the therapy dogs, I've asked every day, "Did you pet all the dogs?" Because I would pet all the dogs. "Are the dogs still there? Are the same number of dogs there that were there in the beginning?" So, I don't know what the status is. I know that we were gifted, I think, dogs or a dog. I know that there's Oxford, the cute little Cavalier King, whatever. So, what is the status? Are we still having people come in and bring their dogs? Are there multiple dogs? Is there one dog there? So, I just was inquiring about just those four things, but that's it.
Thank you, Emily. Stay there, because I can speak to some of these. Backwards, I can't speak to the therapy dogs. I haven't asked that question, but given some of the posts, today, I spent a lot of time talking about your other subjects. There was an issue of alternative place to eat because they were by the PAC, or they were inside the, and because of the bands, the things that were going on with plays and bands, they've moved that, and anyone who's uncomfortable with eating at the cafeteria simply needs to talk to a counselor. There's like two other spaces that they've identified for kids to eat in, and there's support in those rooms.
Can I make a comment to that really quick?
Yeah.
You have children, all of you probably, I don't know, have children. These are teenage kids, and to get up and ask for help in front of other kids is a difficult thing for these teenagers to do.
Can they, how do we do it privately? I mean, we can't find them if we don't know them. We're trying, I mean, the ones we dealt with immediately were the ones that were at the PAC. They were regularly at the PAC. They were regularly at the PAC, so we told those kids, and that the one time it was too full, so a kid couldn't get in, we fixed that by adding more space. But I don't know how to find a child who doesn't know, or...
Is there any, like, finance to them, or is it...
All right, I'll take that note. I'll take it. The other one is, you're soon going to be seeing a post about overall safety, because I asked the question myself, "Has anything changed from the day that we announced what our security was?" The answer is no. We have a police presence every day. We have the number of people that are still here from Oxford Schools. We have our own security force that we have hired, and those numbers are still in the building every single day. There has not been a change, and as far as I know, the announcement's going to come out here that the plan is that nothing's changing until the end of the year. So, sometimes they're marked, sometimes they're unmarked, sometimes they're plainclothes, sometimes they're not, but I'm being told, and I'll relook tomorrow, but I spent a good time today discussing this, and there's a statement that's going to be coming out. And the same thing with the dance. I saw a post about the dance, and I immediately said, "You didn't see anything about safety." And so, they're now going to be communicating about the safety that's going to be there, and there's going to be a sheriff's presence as well as our paid security force.
Have any of you rolled up on the high school in the morning for five days in a row?
Yeah, everybody, yes.
And do you see the police officers?
I do. And I drop off at the pool for different sporting events and stuff like that.
Every morning in the front of the school where the auditorium is?
I don't take them every single morning, but they, I see a police car every time I'm there.
Well, there used to be one sitting right up near the building, on the sidewalk.
Which they can't park there, because that's how the buses come in and the kids get off.
On the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk.
And I've only seen that once in the last two weeks, and it was there every single day.
There's usually one in the visitor parking.
That hasn't been there?
Yep. So, let me, let me talk about being more visible, because that's obviously a critical thing. If it's not visible to you, it's not visible to our children, and if they're there or not, if there's not some sense of visibility, I want to make that present. So, I will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Brian?
Hello.
Hello, Brian.
Always a bit scattered with my notes, I suppose. So, just a couple of things in following the last meeting that you guys had here. Well, first off, congratulations to Ken. I think he's a great candidate and person for that job. Secondly, so at the last meeting, I don't want it to be misunderstood why we come to the board meetings, and I thought a lot about that, because I wouldn't, normally, before the circumstance that we had, I wouldn't necessarily be coming to the board meeting to speak my mind. In thinking about it, I guess the way that it developed was that after the shooting occurred, there was a lot of silence from the school in general, the high school, and for multiple reasons, they were handling it, and it was quiet, and it was, you waited a long time to hear from the people there, including the principal. So, I think to have a voice, we came to the board, because the board should collect concerns and comments from the community to be able to take that to the administrative level and then go from there. We had a good meeting with the administration after that point, too. But again, I think the reason why we're coming to the board is to have some of our concerns heard, and I'd be happy to take that to anybody else, too, from the school, but I don't know, necessarily, even up to this point, I don't know if that's been, it hasn't really been brought to us to ask us what our opinions are, or what we're seeing from our students. I feel that there's a little bit of a shortcoming in that leadership component, and I don't think that necessarily falls on the administration or the board. I'd like to see it from the high school level, because I feel like if I see it, then my kids are going to see it, too. And I ask my children about what they're seeing at the high school level, and I don't hear much about that, and I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but I think I'd like to hear more from the high school to help the kids feel more comfortable saying the things that they need to say. In regard to how they're collecting information from the children, I asked my kids what the survey said, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but, you know, it asked what your current stress level is, why, and what can they do. I think they're filling that out in advisory, from what I understand. To me, I'm not sure how confident, as an adult, I would feel, filling that out if my employer asked me that, and how transparent I wanted to be with that. So, I feel like we need to explore some different options for the kids to be able to speak, and I've mentioned from the beginning, and Tom knows by now, I've asked a lot for the opportunity for the kids to have a forum to speak, and then the parents as well, and that really hasn't happened. And it gets to be kind of a bummer for you guys to have to keep hearing us bellow on about this at every meeting, but I think it would be remedied a little bit if we were given that opportunity and facilitated from the people at the school level, so we can start building some trust again and developing communication and showing our children that it's okay to speak about things, because it's safe to assume that they're not okay, and even if they're saying they're okay, sometimes I don't think they're okay, and that's the way kids work. So, you have to kind of poke and prod them in a formal manner. I'm sure you guys have all done that with your kids. You know, you ask them how the day was, they're like, "Oh, it's fine." Well, give me a little bit more than that. I mean, like, so you have to lead with different questions so that they'll feel comfortable getting answers. So, I think I'd like for them to have some kind of formal person or conversation with people to do that, that isn't necessarily forced upon them, but maybe like small groups or forums, or some kind of way to make that happen, aside from just the advisory. That's one thing I have. More coming forward. Pretty much, that's a lot of the things that I had. Our concerns for my kids, are their emotional well-being? One of the circumstances earlier this week, my son, my 10th character, came home and said he was really upset because there was a kid that was walking around the hall, and he ended up squealing loudly, and a girl fell to the ground, covered her ears, and started crying. He was very hurt by that and upset, and I don't know if anybody follows up to help her. I don't know, because I'm not there, and I hope that she's reaching out, but I don't know for sure. I'm sure if a staff person saw that, they would ask her. But I guess my point in saying that is that, again, I know that there's children that are not okay, and it's logical. It's logical to not be okay after this, for any of us. So, again, I just, I hope we can find different avenues to explore that with the children and help them feel comfortable saying that. My other thing, too, is that I'm not sure who we're supposed to reach out to at the school. I don't know who, you know, if we talk about D&amp;A students, for instance, I don't know who the D&amp;A student is right now. I don't know what role our FSLs are playing. I understand that my son's FSL that he was talking to at Lakeville ended up moving over to the high school. I'm not sure what role he's playing now. So, there's been plenty of times that I've had, already had to call in for my kids because they weren't okay to come to school. And I don't know how that's being looked at, like, because I assume if you start seeing a trend with children missing school more frequently, and not only children, I know from what I understand, a lot of teachers have been missing school, too. It kind of speaks to the fact that they're not okay, which brings me to my good point here. Whoever brought that last email out from the administration, I mean, that was, I think I let out a sigh afterward, and it was what we needed to see. It showed leadership. It showed that things were not okay. It made it okay to not be okay. It recognized that we had shortcomings in the way that we're doing things, and it brought me a lot of hope moving forward. So, I am really grateful for that letter, and I hope to see a lot more of them like that, to be honest.
Brian, thank you. I will, I will talk to appropriate people to make sure that when it comes to high school staffing, who's who, what are the players that would be communicated with for certain reasons and various reasons. Again, several times you mentioned finding other avenues, alternate ways in which, whether it be small groups or whatnot, that we can get these kids together so that they have opportunities to continue their healing process. Yes, it is still on my docket to work on this forum that I think first, I'd like to see the parents have an opportunity and whiteboard, be on a stage, just whiteboards some things and talk and have open conversation, and still...
I feel like our backs are against the wall with that in regard to timeline, like, if you're thinking about seniors heading out, and I'm fearful that clock is going to tick real fast and we're going to miss the opportunity. I sure hope we don't.
I hope we can move this pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Renee?
Hello, my name is Renee Upham. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with all of you. I'm a teacher at Oxford Middle School, so the building you're in right now. My son, Keegan, is an 11th grader at Oxford High School. Those two facts give me a unique vantage point. Those two facts also mean that in my home, the past three months, we've experienced our fair share of grief and sadness and confusion in my house. of you. I'm a teacher at Oxford Middle School, so the building you're in right now. My son, Keegan, is an 11th grader at Oxford High School. Those two facts give me a unique vantage point. Those two facts also mean that in my home, the past three months, we've experienced our fair share of grief and sadness and confusion in my house. My children, all three of them, have been Oxford School students since preschool. We were loyal to and grateful for this district long before Oxford Strong became a thing. I won't speak about my son's experience on November 30th. It is enough to know that as a mom, I know without a single doubt that a part of his childhood was stolen, as were the childhoods of many students, including my own students in this building. Just this week, a student of mine, my classroom's across the hall, big football wrestler, was at my desk and heard some kids stampeding down the hallway and gripped my desk in fear and panic and was curious if I should put the nightlock in. This is not over by far for many of our Wildcats. I find it daunting to speak about the difficult and critical issues that face educators and children in just five minutes. I'll be honest, it would be reassuring and beneficial for all of you here and others in positions of power to seek me out rather than me seek you out and have to convey this message in five minutes. The fact that I'm not being sought out as a teacher or as a parent is disappointing and sometimes scary to me. There has been unspeakable violence in our community. While I understand that there are a tremendous amount of delicate and difficult things that are being talked about right now by administrators and the school board, the wall of silence, I feel, as a teacher and as a parent, is mind-boggling. It saddens me that many, many people give lip service to how important, respected and valued teachers are, yet our voices are often the last one sought out. As I heard a parent say at a board meeting right after November 30th, "Emails are not acceptable as the only means of communication. My child is entrusted to you and to the many administrators here. I needed someone to look him in the eyes in the early days and ask him what he needed." The day after November 30th, I wrote a letter to Governor Whitmer and the Michigan Superintendent of Schools. They both responded. I will tell you what I told them. The system failed our children that day. It failed the staff that day. November 30th did not happen in a vacuum. Teachers have been leaving this profession in droves since before that for years. The writing has been on the wall. Schools are understaffed, they're overburdened, class sizes are too high. We spend an inordinate amount of time on behavioral concerns. Teachers are given less and less time to devote to real and deep academic content and on developing true connections with our students. We do not have time to do the important work. Learning time is stolen daily. We are dealing with mental health issues without the proper staffing numbers or the proper protocols. And now violence has been visited upon us. Why am I being forced to share all of this information in five minutes that I had to sign up to do? There was a miscalculation, in my opinion, in thinking that everyone would be on board post-November 30th to moving ahead full speed. In the view of many, this was done without adequate forethought and input. I'm grateful that the district is taking a step back right now and allowing the high school teachers and students a chance to reevaluate what is working and what is not. But why was the pace so fast early on? Soon after the shooting, a trauma counselor asked me what I wanted. I told her I wanted a revolution of parents and educators who refused to move forward until the above issues are addressed. It isn't that complicated. In taking care of teachers, you are taking care of students. If we are silent, we are failing again. If these issues are not addressed, we are failing again. If we do not focus on all our children, we are failing. I told you I would not speak about my son's experience on November 30th, but I'd like to give voice to his days after. He's skateboarding. He's skateboarding again, training a new puppy, laughing with his siblings, and he's keeping his grades high as they were before the shooting. But he's also figuring out how to walk through hallways that he finds incredibly difficult to walk through. He's experiencing trouble sleeping for the first time in his life. He's uncomfortable with the fact it's winter and kids are wearing coats to school and he's not sure what's under those coats or if the people wearing them are struggling with mental health issues. He wondered just yesterday why students weren't informed of construction going on in the building, which produced loud banging noises and caused panic among some students. He told me when he goes to college, he hopes no one asks him where he's from. This wonderful Where my children have had magical childhoods. He no longer wants to claim this place as his own. I ask you, please, to find out about all the other kids who have stories like his. Whether it's permitted by your board bylaws or not, please find the teachers, find the students, talk to them, and ask others to join you in doing that. Thank you.
Renee, thank you. I think the last part of what you said wraps a lot of this up. Find them. Take the initiative to find the teachers and the students and work to meet their needs. Beyond that, that the system failure went way before 11:30 as things that we understand, understaffed, not having staffed for emotional needs, emotional issues, not having maybe even some protocols in place, we're overwhelming our teachers because of large classrooms, because of all those things that get in the way of building relationships with the kids. And then specifically at the high school, just a few things that just, are we thinking about what we're doing like a construction site? Are we thinking about what we're doing and are we communicating? Or, yeah. We have children have lost their childhood.
Hi.
Hello.
All right. Thank you for letting me be a last-minute participant. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but after hearing what some other people had to share, and I've written to the cabinet about my concern about this, I just kind of felt that before we start diving into these contract negotiations within our district, that this should be something that we are considering. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. But we have an immense need for more FSLs in our district and more mental health support, as everyone is stating. I'm a teacher at Clear Lake Elementary. I teach 5th grade. I have 28 students and I can tell you the kids are not well. Before the tragedy, the kids are not well. I feel like my job this year, aside from being their teacher, is also being a counselor. And I am not, like, my husband's a counselor, but I am not equipped for the mental health issues that exist in my classroom. Per confidentiality, I'm not going to share those with you tonight, but I have at least five students in my class who are not well. We have a social worker who's half-time. RFLs are shared, like, over, you know, several buildings. I know that there have been improvements made this year and I'm thankful for those, but it's not enough. On Fridays, for instance, we have nobody there. I had a tragic incident happen in my classroom and I had nobody there. Brad had to take on that entire situation by himself. We had to call our social worker who was not working that day, so that time came from her personal time. I don't know if she was compensated for that or not, but the bottom line is we are not equipped the way that we should be in our elementary buildings, in our middle school building, or our high school building. If we want to catch things before they become manifest into bigger issues, these young children, even at DA, they need our support and we need to start pouring into them when they're much younger, before it escalates into something that's much bigger. Like I said, there's been a huge increase in issues even before the tragedy. We have an increase in technology. We have an increase in social media. We can't control everything that they're seeing, but I can tell you, they're seeing things that their eyes shouldn't be. They are researching things that they shouldn't be. They know too much and it's our job as adults in their lives to support them and help them through what they're exposed to. The tragedy hasn't made any of that easier. A kid popped a bag in our class the other day, a student that moved here after the tragedy, and my entire class freaked out, including myself. Or not well. Other districts around us are investing in more support. Either they have more support than we currently have as far as mental health goes, or they're investing in it for next year. You can look at postings, you can call other districts and see what they have in line, but we need to have at least one FSL and one social worker at least per building, even at that elementary level. It'd even function better if we had one for special ed and one for general ed. They're stretched too thin. Teachers are stretched too thin. People aren't applying to these jobs because they're not paying enough. We are not paying our FSLs and our counselors and our social workers what they're worth. Our FSLs aren't even offered an OEA position currently. That could change, but that's why I wanna get it out in the open so that we can pay our people what they're worth. Our kids are worth that, in my opinion. Our social workers are working beyond their hours. Our FSLs are working beyond their hours. We need to compensate them, not just with pay, but what are their benefits. I touched on a lot of this, but that's pretty much what I have to say and I hope that you hear me. Our kids need this. Our teachers need this. We're gonna lose a lot of people if we don't start investing in our kids' mental health. I'm not saying that as a threat. I'm saying that as it's going to be a reality. When people are stretched so thin, as was stated earlier, people are leaving in droves and I'm talking to a lot of people who don't know if it's worth staying. And it scares me because as somebody who's committed to staying, I know that we need to do right by our kids, but we need support or everyone's falling apart. So I hope this is something that's considered, that we can start looking into fulfilling these FSL positions, start offering more so that people actually want to come and be a part of Team O because it's pretty amazing. But I just wanted to get that need because like you said earlier, Tom, like, we don't know what's needed unless it's addressed. Sorry, I'm not supposed to address you. But we need to know what's going on in our schools and I can tell you, everyone's doing their very best, but we're just short-staffed. So, thank you.
Lisa, thank you. And also want to let you know that this is probably the number one discussed thing-
Go ahead.
-that I've experienced and there is lots of conversation about pouring money in the right places to get the help that you are describing. So I want you to know that. It is the number one discussion that is occurring, that I've been involved in and even with fellow board members. So a popped bag sets the whole class. Wow.
Yep. It was something that would have been totally normal last year and it sent us all gleaming.
I get it. I get it. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Angela, is that it? All right. Thank you. We move on to item number five, scheduled activities. Board members, you have a meeting on the 14th for you and the community. Our goal is to have the contract locked down by the end of business day next Wednesday so that Angela can put that into the board book and put it on the website as she normally does for the agendas on that Thursday. And then on Monday, you'll be voting on that, we'll be voting on that contract that Ken has agreed on and his first full day will be the very next day. He'll be in charge of our district on March 15th. So I just wanna make sure that you're all aware of that timing. I don't have anything for clarification. How about final board comments? Dan?
All right. Couple things and at the risk of probably taking some heat, I'm gonna say it anyways because it needs to be said. Everything that was brought to the table today is a reality. 100% reality in our district. But the other reality that I know and have known for a long time and I've stated it for as long as I've been on this board, three things that go into making a district. Number one, the district. Number two, gotta have a student. Number three, gotta have a parent. It's about time that we get parents involved in their kids. There shouldn't be, there should not be an excuse why you can't be involved. And if you're not involved, we gotta do whatever we gotta do to make them involved. Get them to the table. Go to their table. Because you can learn a lot about a kid when you talk to their parent. And if the parents aren't coming to the table, why aren't they coming to the table? I'm not saying that for any other reason than we got to know. I think it was said earlier, we have to know what they're looking at. We have to know what they're researching. We have to know, we have to know everything that that kid is doing when they come into our building. We have to be a partner with a parent so they can help us know what their kid is interested in. And it doesn't need to be that my kid is doing this or that. Tell us what they're interested in, what their likes are, what their dislikes are. Let us know. And what I'm not saying, us, the board, let your teachers know, let your principals know, let your assistant principals know. And we have to accept that conversation. Because if we don't, we're in trouble. We are in trouble, not just for this group of kids, but the kids that are in first grade and are coming all the way up. Any opportunity we can be involved with a family is an opportunity that is well worth the investment of time. And the other thing that I'll say is, as our superintendent comes on board, the next superintendent comes on board on the 14th, we need to move as a group to have a third-party firm selected real soon there, either before or after. So we need to speed our process up. And we gotta have the conversations at a much more rapid pace and we need to put the pressure on these firms to get to the table and talk to us so that we can get that in place so that the superintendent has that support right off the bat. We cannot let it, we cannot put the next superintendent behind the eight ball of dealing with all the other stuff, including that piece. It's our responsibility. We need to do it. And Eric, Chad, myself, and doing the work of it, but we've gotta get the other parties to the table and say, "Okay, let's get this thing rolling."
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Final board comments? Yes, Heather?
I wanted to thank everybody for sharing. I have a lot of concern as well about the mental health. I know I've mentioned before, I have four kids actively in the district, too. So my seat up here is a heavy one as well. And I just, I really feel like several teachers have been coming to our board meetings recently and conveying the same concerns about not having enough tools to do their job effectively and having too many jobs to do. And the teaching ends up falling so far down the line. I just think before we spend any more dollars doing other things, land balancing or any of that other stuff, all of that stuff can wait. All of that stuff can be put on back burners now. Our life is different. Our focus is different. Our needs are much different. And people are coming and telling us that- Our needs are much different, and people are coming and telling us that these are their needs, and, and we need to try and, um, get dialogue and, um, find out more from our parents, our students, our teachers. I, I am all for it, and, uh, I, I will, I will try and help support it as much as I can. So I just kind of wanted to go on record for that.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone else? John, once again, I want to thank you for, for the process. It was, uh, again, it was grueling, it was, it was tough at times, um, but the integrity of the process was astounding, and, and I just appreciate that very much, and I appreciate what MLI does to make sure that that takes place. Um, so, thank you, thank you, thank you. And, um, I am going to, to work to try to set up some forums, um, trying to communicate, find different ways to communicate than just emails and typed words. We have to get face-to-face, we have to start talking with one another. And I can assure you, I, I, we are talking about how to get more support into every one of our schools. And I think that's one of the reasons why Tim went to Lansing, is to try to work on some of these things, and so we'll, we're, we're hope to see some things, uh, here very soon. With that, um, I don't have anything under other. So Angela, um, let's consider the meeting adjourned, and it's a great day to be a Wildcat. Thank you very much.